Let's have a word of prayer, please. Most gracious heaven and father, dear lord, thank you for this day. Dear god, just thank you for me to bless us all, father. Lord, I just ask a special blessing upon each and every one in this room today. I just ask that you just watch over, protect, and keep safe, dear god. Dear lord, there's just so many people out in the world with sicknesses, dear lord, illnesses. Lord, I just ask that it be your will that you just give them the most wanted help, father. For those that have lost loved ones, we just ask, lord, to wrap your love and arms around them and comfort them, dear god. Dear lords, we go into this meeting today, I just ask that you be with each and every one of us, dear god. Give us knowledge and wisdom, guidance, dear lord, that we seek you in every decision that's made, father. Lord, I just ask you to forgive us from any sin, please, as these things in Jesus' precious name.
We got Ms. Ruth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ruth Adam Ball. I'm with the 2020 census. Let me tell you, if every person that's not counted, it costs our state and our community $2,000. One of the things that you probably know most about the census is that is what our House of Representatives is based on. The last census, 2010, we lost one seat. We really don't want to lose any more seats in the House. So therefore, we've already started with the census and the first phase, and that is trying to recruit people to come in and work for the 2020 census. There are two more positions left. One person's called an numerator. I call it a mapping person. What they do is they go out, especially like new subdivisions that's coming in since 2010, they go out, write the street name down, write house numbers, they have a little iPad set it up. This is trying to make sure that we don't miss any households. The next one is what we call census takers. That's people that do not send their census back in. So somebody goes out. Now, for this one, it will only, you will only work in the county in which you live. Why is that? Because you probably know the county better than anybody else. So instead of sending, like me from Lefebvre County over here to Union County, and I'm going, mm, I do use my GPS. But, if I'm here, you know the county best. These jobs pay anywhere from $14 to $18 an hour. That's not bad for our state. Plus, you get mileage. For every mile that you travel, it's 58 cents per mile. So, these jobs were run through the end of 2020. Trying to make sure, what I'm asking of you is that you put some kind of information in your employee's check. That way, they will know, they will tell their family about it, they'll tell their friends about it, they'll tell their church members about it. And so the information will get out so that Union County can be covered.
Are most of your census takers retired people, or what's the age range?
A lot of them, like myself, are retirees. So, yes, it would be a lot of retirees. But they're not only retirees, they're the full gamut of the age range. Because with these jobs, you can work as much or as little as you like. If you only want to work five hours that week, you work five hours. If you want to work 40 hours, you work 40 hours. But 40 is the max, you can't get overtime.
Well, Ms. Ruth, how many people are you looking for? I mean, is it a certain number, or?
For Union County, I'm looking at, I was trying to remember, I think it's around like 34 people to work.
Thirty-four census takers?
Thirty-four in all. That's what you enumerate as your census takers.
You'd think that shouldn't be a problem.
You would think it wouldn't be a problem. But people are real slow about applying for some reason. Everything is online. You go to 2020census.gov/jobs, and you'll find the application there, and you'll apply. If people don't have internet connections at their house, they can always go to the public library. Y'all probably have some other places that they can go and apply. They can go to a friend's house. We just need them to apply.
Can it be someone that's already got a job, and they just want to do that on a part-time basis?
It can.
I can't believe that they, people jumping on it.
I would think, I would think with what's being paid, you know, because truth in this area, there's just not that many jobs that's gonna pay $14 to $18 an hour.
No benefits.
I can't say, no benefit.
No benefits. You gotta say I'm involved, pretty much.
So if you're looking for the business, like insurance or something else, it's not there.
We'll have to try to work.
We'll do, we'll, 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 we'll.
Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak with y'all this morning. Y'all have a blessed day.
You too.
Got a statement of expenditure for the tax office in February 2019 that we need a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Motion to read.
Motion to read the second, man. All right, and then a statement of expenditure for the sheriff's department and jail, February 2019. So we can put two and three together on it? That's next. Think that could be a lot of this?
Yeah, sure.
They should see you to understand what people want.
That's motion to accept the sheriff's report.
Motion by Dave. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. And then a motion for the mill log, the sheriff's department.
Motion to approve.
Motion to read. Second by Dave, all in favor. We need to look at the claims document from February.
Motion.
Motion by Dave. Second by Dave, all in favor. Need to look at the board minutes from February. Motion by Steve. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve.
We got a road department work schedule. Motion to approve.
Motion to read. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. The solid waste rate. Motion by Dave. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. Medical examiner statements and fees, of fees, there's 17 now that y'all. I, I think I got an email, but my email's not doing right, and it, it just wrote off. I'm pretty sure I sent it. Did you get an email, Dave?
I don't think I did. May have looked this round.
Second, motion by Steve, second by Ren, all in favor. Motion to approve. Okay, registration, travel, and logging for a conference from the Panamanian Marini on 9/11 of April. Motion by Dave, second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. We got some quotes on the road from the road department.
I didn't bring me that choice. She didn't send all of them. Oh, I was thinking it was two.
I will be taking.
Oh, I think it's four, okay. Fulton Pike and then GNO.
No, that's not the road.
That's, that's called as covers. Stracks cover. I guess you can't say where they are.
He's, he's got the, uh, the, the flood, you have to get.
By all of the way, do you have the county roads still closed?
Not, not due to the flood. Yeah, not due to the flood. We got those passing. We still got some fixed, but they're passing.
Okay, so Rivers-Dickerson, is that one? Rivers-Dickerson?
Yeah, the one was like 54.
For 54,000?
Yeah.
Maybe that's 800?
It's something like that. That was, that was like 49,500.
And the other was Mid-South Machinery for $49,500.
That's correct.
54,000, I'm sorry. First one's 54,800 from Rivers-Dickerson in Columbus. The next one's Mid-South Machinery, and it's for $49,500. And that is, there aren't two for that.
Got a motion to approve above you.
We got a motion by Randy to approve the lowest bid, and a second by Dave, all in favor. Do I make sign anytime?
This would be Mid-South Machinery, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We gotta get some quotes for emergency purchase on coverage. I think that's what you'd have.
Okay. And we have Fulton Pike in construction, and it's for $6,982.50. Six, nine, eight, two, point, five, oh. Then, are these together, then? What is this? All these are GNO. This one I don't know.
Oh, we got, okay.
I got three from GNO. Is that right? Okay. We probably have to explain this, that, um, this one is for $6,573. It's for a quantity of 50, 96 by 14 by 50.
Come here, Scotty, give her a spot. That's 14 gauge. That's what that is.
And then you got this one?
Yeah, that's a 60.
So operate these equivalent, I mean, what are we comparing them to?
This one here is for...
Is this one to go with that one? Or what?
That's an 8 by 50. So here's 8 by 50, compare the 8 by 50 to... That's 14 gauge there. That's from 14 gauge.
What's the difference in the product?
For these two?
Y'all like the same, who's got one is...
Fulton Pike is $6,982.50, and GNO is $6,573. And these two?
Those two together.
That's right. These are together. So you have GNO supply at $6,573, zero cents. Fulton Pike in construction, $6,982.50. This or something.
That's those emergency supplies. We haven't had any of those.
Yeah, he might need a resolution. He probably has a resolution.
Okay, so right now we're trying to do the quote on the emergency purchase for culverts, right? And that's between Fulton Pike and GNO supply. Is that right?
Motion to accept the low bid, GNO supply.
We got a motion by Dave, second lowest bid, and the second by Ren, all in favor.
Now you sit on these? Yeah, but I don't, I'm not sure about these.
That's what, that's what we had to get for the emergency. So, there's the road number.
So this goes with the resolution?
That one's a different.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different road, a different price. Those are for the same, those two.
Oh, I just don't have that one on here, so I didn't hold it. So this is an emergency purchase for...
These, from these right here. Channel 14, channel 44, 54, 143, 114, 119, the numbers there.
Okay, so this is the... Can I have a copy of this, I need some...
Yeah, we can keep this right here. It's somewhere in the 40, you don't have to worry about it, running for all those pipes, the one down in that bottom. And those are all metal pipes, so, then they're bigger.
So this is already in purchase?
Yeah.
From both these?
Got it together. Is that what you need? You can have it right there.
Thank you.
Scotty, you were doing all the emergency, right?
Yeah, yeah, we also thought it. You had to help.
That's what the flood was.
Yeah, that's, that's due to the flood.
Some of them had its flood coverage, and due to the flood.
You need anything, let me know.
You'll be calling, right?
I'll be calling you.
And that's probably not, I don't, we still in the process of trying to go through everything.
Okay, okay.
That's the one you replaced, Heather.
Yeah, that's the one we had to do some way up quick.
We just need to approve already purchased culverts. Right?
All right, did you put Dave?
Oh, I thought he was doing the cul, I thought that was...
The other one was Dave made a motion by any second.
I made a motion on...
That was on these other.
Yeah, that was on the two quotes.
Yeah, on that. So now we're gonna have seven of these. Right?
To accept the emergency.
That was already.
All right, we need, we need a, a motion to accept the emergency. Motion by Randy, second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve.
The 5,000, uh, GNO?
All of that's been approved.
Oh, yeah, see that one, okay.
Emergency purchase.
Okay, more time. Thanks.
The one that Dave approved first has got to be built. They didn't have it, okay?
Right, and then the separate...
The rest of them we've already got. You put in...
Right, so we got, that's two separate things. That's what I need. Thank you.
All right, we need to give the beta survey.
Motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. Beta's get there, man.
Your page is...
That's right. Okay, you ready?
I'm ready.
Missinette?
I'm ready.
If you bode your mind...
Rose, man, she's gonna get y'all messed up this way.
Just a little, but no, it's all right.
Memorandum, how you say that? Memorandum of agreement for emergency road bridge repair award for a bunch of money, $2,268,000.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, second by Ren, all in favor. Motion to approve.
And you will sign, second by Dave.
That's good, I'd be glad to.
All right, okay. One second.
Which one is that for?
Forty-six.
I mean, which one? Forty-six. Is it more than one?
Yes, two, two. The two, I guess you'd say, would say south, south of the new bridge, of the big channel.
Got some over there.
Is that it, just two places?
Yes.
You need me to send it to more of the spotlight?
Oh, well, thank you. I'll make a copy of this in just a second. Thank you.
All right, we need a manual check for the fire truck purchase of $267,500 to be paid from the general fund, fire department. $10,000 to be paid from the volunteer fire department fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Randy. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. We're gonna be able to look at today.
It is certainly hard trying to...
Is it?
I told you, you said it, Dave, you get to make it. Oh, he's waiting on the check.
Let me take it.
I guess not, and then I need to skip that.
Sir? Where's you?
Could you make a copy of this for me? Thank you. And then the original goes...
I come in red.
And I think a man is out there.
It didn't come in red, right? That's what I want.
Oh, y'all, fire ain't in the red, what I mean.
All right, February surrender tag list. I made it, though, pal.
I got it ready for him. He gets there.
I need a motion to approve your... Motion by Dave, second by Steve, all in favor. Okay, we need to do the election commission plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Randy. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. I want to get 17. She's not here, she's not here, we could skip it. All right, we all been through, uh, circuit clerk payment for service of register, rest star.
Motion to approve.
Motion to see. Second by Dave, all in favor. Motion to approve. Need travel to Jackson for the county administrators supervisors on March 11th and 12th for a conference. Then a motion. Motion by Dave. Second by Ren, all in favor. Motion to approve. We need to, we got another here we need to, I don't think it's on, on here. Need to add it. We need to vote on continuing to state of emergency for our county. We need to vote on continuing to state of emergency for our county.
In the statute, in the statute of the law, it says you must do it if you're a perfectly consistent, they didn't decide to discontinue or to keep it going. I motion to approve the almost due for third day.
Motion by Ren, circuit clerk Steve, all in favor. Motion to approve. You got it, Missinette? You got this, Miss Nick? Randy, Randy, Steve, Randy, Matt, and Poston, Steve.
You got any time to shoot?
You guys like me? Man, the mayor's gonna say something? Mr. Cameron, he's gonna hear it.
We touch that or not? No? Stay at circle.
We wait that weekend, too. Really? All right, we need a motion to recess Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Both.
Motion by Randy. Second by him, all in favor? Motion to give.